Welcome, everyone.
Recording in progress.
Welcome. Welcome. We're going to get started. Welcome. And now for the speeding of the Somerville City Council to order. In accordance with Chapter 107 in Acts 2023, this meeting of the City Council will be conducted via oral participation. Please note that video and audio is being recorded and may be shown live on local access government channels and on the City of Somerville website. It will be available for future review. Will the clerk please call the roll? This is Ms. Wilson.
Yeah.
Ms. Davis. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Smith. Here. Ms. Scott. Ms. Moore. Ms. Burke.
President.
Ms. Klingon. Ms. Scott. Here. Ms. Robinson. Here. Ms. Johnson. With six counts present, five acts in, we have four.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We are expecting Ms. Wilson and Ms. Vaughn to join us this evening. Pursuant to our Rule 32, let it be known that the City Council's loose the flag of the United States of America, and let us recall our oath to uphold the Constitution and the laws of commonwealth to the best of our abilities and understanding. We'll begin this meeting with a moment of silence. I'll ask how many councilors wish to say a few words about members of our community that we have lost. Okay? If all of those are able to stand, please rise for a moment of silence. You may be seated. So, welcome. This evening, a few quick announcements. You see this laptop is going to be on the table. Those in the chambers are these. This is our Zoom setup this evening, our tech setup. So, when you're speaking, speak toward the laptops this evening. So, that's what we want to pick up here when you're speaking about. We will be taking into account the order. I know one word is that it's acknowledging and welcoming Ms. Wilson to the committee, but as we know, that is maybe. So, here, as her interim president, we're going to take first our citation out of 10.1, then we'll move to 10.6. And then we'll take up 7.2, 7.33, 7.1, 7.4, all in order. And then take up the second, 7.1, before returning to the regular items of the agenda. So, with that, Madam Clerk, can we? Oh, let's approve the minutes of the regular meeting of September 26th.
Yes, next minute, 10.3, approval of the regular minutes of the regular meeting of September 26th, the 2024.
Any discussion? Okay, that's approved.
And that will bring us to item 10.1. Our citation by Councilwoman McLaughlin, commended and condemned for 16 years of dedicated service to the City of Somerville. Ms. Wilson.
Thank you, Madam President. Patty, if you don't mind joining me at the podium here. Very sad to see Patty go. She's moving on to Cambridge to continue to serve the community regionally. Patty, actually, she sent me a text. I asked her about a list of things she's done. I'm going to get to that. She said in the text, it really made her reminisce about everything that's going on. And seeing Patty leave makes me reminisce about the years that I've worked with her. Because I got out of the Army myself in 2008, when there was a serious opioid epidemic. It was kind of a new thing. It was something that people weren't really talking about as much as they do now. And I came home with the purpose of serving the community for to deal with things like that, substance abuse, people getting stuck in the prison system, things like this. And 2008 was the same year that Patty started working for the City of Somerville. So, every year that I've ever worked in the city, I've always had Patty to turn to, to focus on the things that I really care about and the things that many people in the community just felt like weren't being acknowledged. And not only does Patty help literally save lives, like people are alive today because of the work she's done, of the people who are behind her, where she advocated positions to be created. People are alive today because lives are better as a result of this. And I just always personally have someone to turn to and say, what have we done in this community? So, I'm really sad to see Patty go. I know, actually, it's not going to be that far away. So, I'll always be able to ask her when it's asked for what should we have done in this community. But I did want to point off just a few accomplishments that even I was not aware of. She started in 2008 as a clinical youth specialist for the Health Department, responsible for bringing the trauma response network to Somerville, which addressed suicide prevention. Well, she started collaborations with mental health aid and community partners in 2008, started a jail diversion program in Somerville in 2011. She received the NAMI Award in 2013 for the city's jail diversion program. And she helped get a crisis intervention training for the police in 2013, which has now become a regional model, and people from around the state come to us to learn how to deal with people in crisis and deal with that compassionately. She developed the CORE program, which she is now in charge, well, she's now leaving in 2015. And she was awarded the heroine award from the Massachusetts Committee of Women in 2021. So, these awards just give you an idea of like what she's done as an employee, but as a person, just one of the best people I've ever known. And I'm really going to miss you and look forward to just staying in touch. Thank you.
Matt, thank you so much. The President, Judy. Yeah. Matt, thank you so much for your kind words. Trying to choke back tears here. I have really had a great experience working for the City of Somerville. I started in 2008 part-time and quickly got passionate. My job at the time was really, I didn't create the trauma response, but I carried it on and became the manager of it. And really, my job at the time was to kind of sit in the office and wait for something bad to happen. And as some of you may know me, that is not my strength. I cannot sit by when I'm very curious and there's things to do. And so, that's how we started doing a lot of community trainings. I can say that I have learned so much from my colleagues that I've worked with in the many city departments, some of the councils, the conversations I've really appreciated, the many conversations I've had with many of you. And I've learned so much from the people that we've tried to assist who have struggles with behavioral health, mental health, addiction. Such strength and possibilities, and I've been really privileged to be a small part of people's recovery and success. And I want to thank the mayor as well for her support over the years. We were able to expand our unit this past fiscal year, this current fiscal year. And with that, we were able to hire two new clinicians, Maria Tressa and Marissa, who added language capacity to our unit, which, as everyone knows, is so essential. I also can't, you know, kind of leave and accept this award without thanking the Somerville Police Department and the leadership there. And more importantly, I really want to thank the officers, the frontline officers, who serve this city, serve it well. Change is incremental. Somerville has been committed to improving public safety throughout my tenure here. And it's been amazing to get to know the officers, to understand the passion that they bring and their willingness to serve the community. I've never had an experience, or very rarely had an experience, where an officer has not been willing to partner with us to serve the individuals of this community and the constituents of this community. So, I hope that you will continue to consider possibilities, possibilities of integrating public safety into the responses of the community, knowing that the value that they bring. I was fortunate to go to the International Association Chiefs of Police Conference this past Monday, Tuesday. And it was amazing to hear what other states and communities are doing and to know that a lot of what the Task Force on Public Safety have brought to the city is really in line with innovative responses and leading and cutting edge. But the police department, the reason I went from the Health Department to the Police Department is because I saw the work that they were doing in the community. It was, I often say, when people say, well, why did you start, you know, why did you transfer over? It was gold. I found gold. I was at the Health Department, couldn't really connect with people. And then I saw the reports and the encounters that police were having. I was like, these are the folks I want to talk to. This is the population that I really wanted to connect to. I have passion about serving. And so, it's been a wonderful experience. I've learned a lot, and I can't thank the council, the mayor, again, all of my city colleagues. It's been wonderful, and I really appreciate all of you and wish you all the best and hope that we can stay in touch. As Matt said, I'm just next door, so. And I love to talk, as you can say. Thank you so much.
Okay. Patty, you're going to be so missed, so, so missed. Next item, Madam Clerk. Oh, yes. Counselors would like to sign on. I think the whole council wants to sign on to this. And can you note that Ms. Wilson is now present? Photo? Should we? Want to take photos? Let's take a quick recess for a photo with Patty.
All right, welcome back. Welcome back. Madam Clerk, can we read the next item, please?
The next item will be item 10.6, a resolution by Ms. Burnley, celebrating National Friends of Libraries Week.
Ms. Burnley.
Thank you through the chair. What a wonderful night we're celebrating. People have really supported this community over the years, and I think that this next item is right in line with that. As everyone around this horseshoe knows, libraries are a critical third space in our community that serves the needs of various populations, including and especially vulnerable populations, the young, the elderly, English language learners, immigrants, et cetera. And unfortunately, the needs of our libraries are not always fully met. There's always more programming that could be necessary to serve the community. There's always more we can do to improve the infrastructure and the engagement of our critical library branches in Somerville. And I want to take this opportunity, National Friends of Libraries Week, which is this week, from October 20th through the 26th, to celebrate the Friends of the Somerville Public Libraries, who have done just incredible work to fundraise, to strategize, to partner with local businesses in order to serve the needs of our community. And they do that by funding things like baby sign language, English language learner classes, cultural passes for all people, not just kids, but all people, for museums and educational programming. It's just really incredible. And they've done this also with the informed involvement of our librarians and of city staff who can really speak to the needs that are happening in these crucial spaces. So, I want to give them the honor of having the Somerville City Council's support, and I would love to sponsor Katie Kidwell, the clerk of the Friends and of the Somerville Public Libraries, to speak.
Katie, please.
Thank you. Hi, good evening. Many thanks to Ms. Burnley for this generous resolution. My name is Katie Kidwell, and I'm the current clerk for the Friends of the Somerville Public Library Board of Directors, as well as a part-time senior substitute librarian working at SPL as well. I'm joined by my colleague Christina Heinrich, who's also a board member and a former president of the Friends. So, the Friends is a not-for-profit, volunteer-driven organization whose mission is to support the three branches of the Somerville Public Library, knowing that they are a vital resource for our residents and beyond. We work with community members, local businesses, and library staff to help the library in its role as a community and cultural hub. The Friends fund the talent and materials needed for events, and the city provides the physical space, but it's the library staff who transform it with their ideas, energy, and hard work. Last year, the Friends raised nearly $30,000, with 95% of all donations going directly to library programs and cultural passes. The work of the Friends is increasingly vital as the city navigates working with undersupervised teen communities, specifically the lack of well-resourced third spaces. Third spaces, which are community areas distinct from the home, which is the first place, and work, which is the second place, play a crucial role in fostering social interaction and strengthening community ties in cities. They act as sites of cultural exchange, learning, and collaboration, and help reduce social isolation, promote inclusivity, and create a sense of belonging. In Somerville, the three branches of the public library are the city's main options for free, accessible, and safe third spaces. And patrons make abundant use of the resources and events provided there. By helping fund the robust programming at the libraries, the Friends helps to create opportunities for community members of all ages to gather, explore ideas, and build connections. The library cherishes its role as a third space in the community and should be recognized and supported for the multifaceted way it contributes to Somerville's civic life. So, on behalf of our board, I just want to express our deep appreciation for your recognition and hope this marks the beginning of continued conversations about community spaces here in our beautiful city. Thank you.
Ms. Wilson, then Ms. Davis.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. Every time libraries come up, I feel the need to just make the point of what an audacious miracle libraries are. If they didn't exist and you went up to someone and described what you wanted to create with a library, they'd probably look at you like you had three heads. So, it's really, it is miraculous that they exist. And I just want to urge people, donate to the library. There's a list, you can donate materials to the Friends of the Library, you can donate, you can donate money. And to our local businesses, they are looking to partner, become a sponsor. So, yeah, yeah, here's to the Friends of the Public Library, an amazing group doing good things for an amazing organization.
Okay, Ms. Davis would like to sign on. Ms. Ba.
Thank you, Madam President. Just everything that the good and extreme, a large counselor just said, I endorse that.
Any others? Okay, this item's approved. Next item?
The next item is going to be item 7.2, which is a request of the mayor requesting a supplemental appropriation of $940,000 from the tax levy to various fire department personal services accounts to fund a collective bargaining agreement with the firefighters' Local 76.
Madam Clerk, are we taking that with 7.32?
Item 7.3 is a request of the mayor requesting the appropriation of $233,881 from the salary contingency salaries account to various fire department personal services accounts to fund a collective bargaining agreement with firefighters' Local 76.
Colleagues, the administration's asking us to consider these, both these items this evening, so we have Mayor Valentine here to speak on this first. Welcome, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for your time. I'm here to submit for your approval a new union agreement for our brave and hard-working firefighters of Local 76. To all the members of Local 76, many of whom are here tonight or watching online, thank you for your unwavering service to the City of Somerville. I would like to ask for those who are in the audience to please stand so you are recognized and express our gratitude to you all for being here. The men and women of the Somerville Fire Department do more than respond to emergencies. They train for increasingly complex buildings rising in our city. They serve as the first responders to public health emergency, and they remain ready at a moment's notice to put their lives on the line for all of us. In recognition of that, this contract not only provides competitive wage increases, 9% over the course of three years, but also includes enhanced incentives for continuing education and advanced training. Our firefighters will be better supported to pursue higher education with increased tuition reimbursements and base pay adjustments for advanced degrees. We're also making sure our firefighters are equipped for the future. As the city evolves, so do the roles of our firefighters that they must take on. That's why this contract establishes new stipends for critical positions like a dedicated infection control officer and an assistant dedicated infection control officer, roles that are increasingly essential in the post-pandemic world. These are the kinds of forward-thinking adjustments that ensure our fire department is prepared for the challenges ahead. Additionally, we are introducing a more dynamic, skills-based deception process for leadership promotions, using assessment centers in conjunction with civil service exams for district chief and deputy chief positions. This will allow us to make promotions based not just on seniority, but on the specialized skills needed to lead in today's rapidly changing environment. This contract reflects the city's commitment to supporting the firefighters today and tomorrow. Our firefighters give so much to this community, and it's only right that we give them the compensation benefits and opportunities they deserve. I'm proud of this agreement, and I believe it is a significant step forward, not just for our firefighters, but for the safety and the future of our city. So, tonight, I urge you to approve the appropriation as not just an agreement between the city and Local 76, but as an investment in the continued safety and well-being of all who live in, work in, and visit Somerville. I want to close by extending my thanks to President Pineda Newfeld and the entire City Council for your continued support, and also to the leadership of Local 76 for working so collaboratively with us on this important contract. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe we have Assistant City Solicitor and Labor Counsel Seergu here as well. Are you here to speak on item? Items?
Yes, I'm here to answer any questions the council may have. I think the mayor summarized the agreement while there, so I wouldn't add any more particular details, but if there's any questions in the MOA, I'd be happy to answer them.
Colleagues, any questions? Items approved. Thank you. Yes. Would you like to speak? Sure, Union President Jefferson.
Thank you, and thank you to the council as a whole, Madam President. Mayor Valentine, thank you for everything you just presented. I also want to thank Jason and Bobby for my negotiating team and Matt Seergu from the city's team. We sat across from each other for quite some time. I just want to hit on how fortunate we are in Massachusetts to have the collective bargaining process. This is a great example of the collective bargaining process working. We came to a fair deal for both sides that both are happy with. We avoided arbitration. This is the second contract for our local between our two units. In the last five months that we've settled, I'm very happy about it. So, I would ask, well, you already did, I was going to ask that you honored the mayor's request, but thank you for approving this. It means a lot to us. Thank you.
Will you just let us know who you are for the record?
Mike Jefferson, President, Somerville Fire, Local 76.
Thank you. Okay, next item, Madam Clerk.
That'll bring us to item 7.1, a request of the mayor requesting approval of a deed, easement, and grant of maintenance license for 808 Windsor Street.
Great. This is also in front of us tonight for immediate consideration, colleagues. I believe we have Special Counsel Seltzer on Zoom.
Yes, I'm here.
Kathy, can you hear us?
I have a problem with my camera at the moment. Can you hear me?
We can't hear you.
You can, or? I'm sorry.
One moment, Kathy.
Can, okay. Oh, did you say yes, affirmative? Yes, we can hear you now. Okay, very good, thank you. I'm sorry, my camera is not talking to Zoom at the moment. Just want to briefly describe the easement to you this evening. This is more or less a standard easement that goes along with a building to make sure that there is public access to the sidewalks surrounding the building. This one also includes a platform and ramp that are adjacent to the building or in the general vicinity of the building, the land surrounding it, all to the end of making those components accessible to the public. The deed that goes with it, it's a small piece of land, about 1,000 square feet, along what appears to be the east side of Windsor Street on the plan that was included with your materials. And that's really just deeding back a little portion of the property that's not needed for the development and that may at some point be needed for the street.
Any questions, colleagues?
Have.
Okay, I believe we need a roll call for this item, Madam Clerk.
We do. It's on item 24-1503, the deed, easement, and maintenance agreement for 808 Windsor Street. 808 Windsor Street. Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott.
Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that item is approved.
Great, next item, Madam Clerk.
The next item is going to be item 7.4, a request of the mayor requesting approval of an extension for 15 months with a new expiration date of March 31, 2026, and an increase of $68,227.63 for the University of Massachusetts-Boston for research and implementation services for the guaranteed basic income pilot.
Wonderful, I believe we have Director Sutton Hernandez on Zoom as well. Can you hear us, Erica?
I can. It says, though, that my, the host has stopped video first, so I apologize, but I'll be sound only.
That's okay, we can hear you.
Great. Thank you, Chair. We're seeking an extension, as noted, of 15 months that would end 3/31/2026 in order to ensure that we have the adequate time needed to properly manage and evaluate the guaranteed basic income pilot. We also are having an increase in funds for our partner, University of Massachusetts-Boston, who is working with us on the research and implementation of this project. Now I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counselor Shozo.
Madam Chair, through you to the director. Is there discussion yet on, on the rollout of once the program has completed, the pilot program has completed, and how to guide the families or any participants in the program to the next steps once the pilot funds elapse?
Through the chair, thank you for your question and to make sure that I fully got that through the, through the internet. You're seeking more information about transition planning once ARPA ends and what happens after the pilot closes, is that your question? Apologies.
Madam Chair, through you to the director, yes.
Through the chair, thank you. Yes, we are looking to begin transition planning at this time. We will have the pilot running until June 30 of 2025. That will be the close of the, the ARPA period. And we are looking at, beginning to look at opportunities for post-ARPA funds and considering what options may be available. This is certainly a discussion and trying to start this early as well. But we are not sure yet what opportunities are available for seamless continuation, though we're looking into these questions now. We'll also be looking forward to the results of the evaluation from baseline to midpoint to end, end survey to guide us on what may work post-ARPA. And part of this increase is also to think through, to add a more organizational and process evaluation component, so we'll be using this extension to help guide us for transition planning as well. So at this stage, we are still very much in, in planning and researching options.
Counselor Shozo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Through you to the director, thank you for that very much. Glad that there is a discussion on that, but also is the discussion, if you wouldn't mind elaborating, is the discussion with the planners of the program and the stakeholders? Or is it a discussion alongside and with the participants as well?
Through you, thank you for, for the question, and we are going to do a couple different components there. First, I think we would be looking to research local opportunities for funding to start, but once that is further along, be able to bring that to, well, that would definitely include our partners in the program, and then I think considering carefully how we can include participants in that process when there still may be a level of uncertainty to, to the type, amount, or any possible changes, you know, to the, to the eligibility or programming, making sure that we're very sensitive to ensure the, what continuation opportunity exists before we can bring it to the participants. But in the meantime, thinking about the evaluation that will help guide us, we're going to be, we have done a survey with our participants as well as with our, some focus groups with our stakeholders and partners who are helping implement the program, and then we'll be coming back to our participants for individual kind of storytelling and discussion-based information gathering in the midpoint, as well as formal surveys at the midpoint and the endpoint with both participants and partners to help inform what may come next.
Counselor Shozo.
Thank you. Last question, Madam Chair, and thank you. Madam Chair, through you to our director, thank you for that information and elaboration. I just wish to emphasize that the planning on the, the completion of the program or the next steps of the program, that they are made with the participants and not only for the participants, that we are not speaking on behalf of our residents, that we're speaking with our residents as well. So I really want to emphasize that point. Thank you very much.
Any other questions?
Thank you. Sorry.
This item's approved. Madam Clerk, next item.
The next item is item 8.1, an officer's communication from the city solicitor requesting that this council convene in executive session to discuss a recent decision in Cobble Hill Center LLC versus the Somerville Redevelopment Authority.
All right, I move that we move to executive session, Madam Clerk. Can we take a roll on that, please?
On that item, Counselor McGlaughlin.
Yes.
Counselor Davis.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson.
Yes.
Counselor Said.
Yes.
Counselor Scott. Counselor Mbah.
Yes.
Counselor Burnley.
Aye.
Counselor Klingon. Counselor Strezzo.
Yes.
Counselor Pineda Newfeld.
Yes.
Counselor Ewan Campin. With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that motion is approved, and the council will enter executive session.
Thank you.
And so, this is city council meeting. This is going on now. City's agenda. City agenda there.
What? Last time.
That's what I'm asking.
This is how she starts.
City point one now.
There you go.
City decision. City's first personal decision in the county head of town. And it's a summer home, you do all the hiring. It's the executive session of the district patent. It's over now. Okay, one's got to go. Partaining by the building. Cochran-Johnson. Yes, CJ. CJ Cochran-Johnson. CJ. Used to be Cochran-Bones and Johnson. City owner. That's what this house was. Because Bones was quite proud. Bones had. He had two. Cochran-Johnson. Cochran-Johnson. Two people that own copper over. Except for the property. The city owns that property. The city has some of the. Conquered their property by the name.
Right.
Some of the arms that property.
Yeah, it's time. If this goes down, we lose everything. Um, maybe. Oh, you're joking. Did you have? It just seems like something else.
Oh my God, what brings you here? What is this?
I'm in the city. City manager. And we don't. City manager. I don't know why, but Jake was in there. He picked it up to see my friend water. And he's really chicken danced. He'd be ashamed I would hear something like that.
Yeah, we both agree.
I don't know if it's a good idea. It's a good thing. Something like that.
I don't have to write it. I mean. I had not. I had no passion for it.
And our choice and our fact is Supreme Court decision. Just trying to face him. Just trying to face him.
I've been verifying that.
We've got five or six of them. But we can talk about it. Just putting my car to go here. I used to watch Perry Mason. That's before you retired. Remember Perry Mason?
Yes, I do.
There was on television. Sixty years ago. He was a guy. Yeah, I remember that Perry Mason.
Yes, I do. Called Drake.
Yes, so.
It's okay.
You can ask my husband Jake how. And then pick this new manager copper over. And he's very good, very friendly.
Well, that's why I'm like, I'm sorry.
I think I'll do it.
Weird. I didn't like me.
The matter is, I'm waiting for this first one. To come business again.
No, we shouldn't. We need it so far.
Great. Thank you, sir.
Me too. It sounds it, wow. Is it not fair? It's wrong. It's not as wrong. It's will. It's a personal right. I didn't tell us that. Just leave it.
I know.
Except by NBA, NBA law. M O L S. M, M, A, H, M, uh, M, but, uh. Uh, Seattle says twenty-four. Dash one five two one. Yeah, so many people have touched that. Just going. I want to do something, see that. See, there's another one here. See, there's one inside Seattle, it's all the way over. This is how you register. I was trying to register this in the last two or three days.
Okay, I now call the City Council back into open session following our executive session. No votes were taken in executive session except for the vote to adjourn. Will the clerk please call, roll to salvage quorum here?
Roll call, Council McLaughlin.
Yeah.
Council Davis.
Uh, here.
Council Wilson.
Present.
Council Said.
Present.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Aye.
Gotta yell that for that to pick it up.
Aye.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon. Council Strezzo. Council Panetta Newfeld.
Here.
Council Ewan Campin. With seven counselors present and four absent, we have a quorum.
All right, so that returns us to our regular agenda. Madam Clerk, can we read the next item?
That is item four point one, in order by Council McLaughlin, that the Director of Libraries and Other Relevant Departments discuss strategies and lay out safety protocols in advance to ensure a safe environment for everyone during events that may draw protests.
It was off during executive session, yeah. Uh, Council McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm very quick on this. Everyone's aware of what happened a couple of weeks ago up at the Summa Library, where there were protests, counter protests, a bomb threat called in. Very concerning. And what's interesting is that this event, the Drag Queen Story Hour, is something that's happened at the library before without incident. And unfortunately, sometimes all it takes is one person to get wind of this information, to cause chaos. But there are methods in place by both possibly city employees and activists that can help make a safer environment, talking to allies in the community about this. Just ways that we can prepare for something like this in the future, strategies to ensure that everyone feels safe in the community. So I've talked to a few residents about this, and I'd love to get the libraries on board as well. And I'd love to discuss this in Public Health and Safety.
Okay, that item is approved and sent to Public Health and Public Safety, and Counselor Wilson would like to sign on. Next item.
Item four point two is in order by Council McLaughlin, that the Director of Public Space and Urban Forestry consider the impact of park equipment that requires special parts that may take long periods to replace when creating future parks.
Council McLaughlin.
Thank you. So this has happened to me a few times over the years, where a piece of equipment gets damaged at a playground. I call someone to see if it can get addressed, and they say it's backordered, and it takes months and occasionally even years to replace them. Lots of times, it's because we ordered special equipment and the kind of cool new equipment that is not easily to replace. As a father now who takes his son to parks a lot, I find my son is not really as interested in aesthetic value as he is the utilitarian nature of these things. And I just wonder if we could just invest in easily replaceable parts. So I don't need a discussion on this, but I wanted to bring it up for my colleagues. If there's ever a playground that opens up in your community, it might be a good question to ask. Are these parts replaceable so that we don't have to wait long periods of time to ensure that the park is fixed? So I just move to approve.
Okay, the item's approved. Next item.
Item four point three is in order by Council McLaughlin, that the Director of Sustainability and Environment invest in rodent-proof composting barrels in the upcoming composting pilot program.
Council McLaughlin.
Thank you. So the city has announced last budget season, the composting pilot program. One of the things besides the cost that held us up in the past is the fear that it might exacerbate rodent issues. But doing some very brief research on it found that there are many options for rodent-proof composting that would actually maybe be cost-effective. If we plan on doing composting in general, this would maybe save us money in the long run because you can get a very small composting barrel for about fifty dollars stainless steel that a rat cannot chew through. And it's smaller, so it's cheaper, and it would save us on the many, many trash barrels that get chewed up right now. So maybe we can't get a true rodent-proof trash barrel, but we can get a rodent-proof composting, which is what the rats want to eat anyways. So I'm just bringing this up. I guess maybe send it to the Rodent Committee just so we can see if they're thinking about this already.
Okay, Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. I want to thank my colleague from Ward One for bringing this forward. You know, definitely part of the conversation about rodents is composting. That's, you know, we have our trash receptacles that get chewed through. They're in there, they're going in there looking for food. So the more food we keep out of our trash supply, the better. I'll admit here publicly that my household goes against the guidance and leaves our garbage-to-garden compost tote out on our front porch 24/7. It's an older, large, plastic receptacle, and whatever material they used for this seems absolutely impervious to rodents. Once I saw some marks indicated it had been chewed on, but they barely made a scratch in it. And I know the rodents are after what's inside there because the compostable liner that you put inside your compost bin sometimes gets chewed all to hell. But the actual plastic receptacle holds strong. So I would say let's make sure whatever, whatever they're using for those, let's get those for municipal compost receptacles. And I'd love to see if we could figure out, I brought this up with the DPW Director, figure out, can we get our trash and recycling receptacles made from the same material, whatever it is? Because it costs us a lot of money replacing those. Thanks.
All right, that item is sent to the Rodent Committee. Next item.
Item four point four is in order by Council McLaughlin, that the Director of Engineering address rainwater runoff on Myrtle Street.
Council McLaughlin.
Approve.
That item's approved. Next item.
Item six A is a report of the Committee on Finance, meeting on October twenty-second, 2024.
Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Madam President. Finance Committee met on Tuesday night, October twenty-second. Three of five members were present, plus we had Counselor Davis guest starring with us. I believe he said it was his first ever non-committee of the whole finance meeting in all his time on the council. So appreciate Counselor Davis. We took up a twenty-two item agenda over a course of a meeting that lasted three hours and forty-nine minutes, an hour and fifty-two minutes of which took place in executive session. We unanimously recommended approval of all twenty-one items sent for a recommendation. That included eight prior invoice items, four grant acceptances, one time-only contract extension, one easement, more on that momentarily, four appropriations, one transfer, and one fund creation. We also were treated to a presentation by our Grants Development ARPA staff about the status of ARPA. There is, as we've discussed in this chamber, a major deadline approaching where all funds must be encumbered. The staff gave a really excellent presentation explaining their approach and the status of our ARPA funds. Basically, the game plan in place is to roll any funds that do come back or not be needed for one project after the deadline to other projects, which is allowed under the new guidance from Treasury. I'll use an ice statement here. I felt very reassured as the originator of that order and very impressed with the work that our staff had done there as a contingency planning obsessive. I'll just say game-recognized game. Now, about that easement. We had the executive session about it. And we had, we did discuss in open session as well. There's extensive conversation in open session. I'll let folks make up their minds about whether there was extensive conversation over an hour and fifty-two minutes of executive session. This is about an agreement with the MBTA to create an at-grade crossing of the GLX just south of the East Sunville Station. So that's between the East Sunville Station and Leechmere. The crossing would connect the Brick Bottom and Interbelt neighborhoods for pedestrians, and it would allow access to East Sunville Station from Interbelt as opposed to currently having to go all the way around. The MBTA wants a pedestrian bridge there for safety, for operational purposes. So this easement, you know, basically would be a stop, we heard it would be a stopgap measure, a temporary measure to create that at-grade crossing. And we also heard the easement does not obligate us legally to build a pedestrian bridge. It would be, we heard it would be expensive, but we're hoping to have that pedestrian bridge funded with private money from developers. And just some background here, that year-long, over a year-long negotiation with the MBTA went right down to the wire before the meeting. That's why the item was submitted without the actual documentation attached. The text of that final easement language was before us in committee, but it was not attached in Legistar. And so the administration has submitted a replacement item that's on tonight's agenda with the full text of that easement. And that's why I will move to sever item six A twenty-two from this report and then ask that this committee report be accepted as submitted.
Do we need a roll call on severing? Okay, that item is severed.
And I'll move to have the item marked as withdrawn, as the administration indicated they wish to withdraw that and replace it with the new item on tonight's agenda. No.
Director Singh.
Through the President, the administration would like to withdraw item six A twenty-two.
That item is withdrawn. So on the committee report. That item is approved. Don't we have some roll calls after?
We do have some roll calls now before the council.
Okay.
Madam President, it will require your colleague-at-large to be in the room in order for those to pass. So we may want to lay them on the table.
Okay. If anyone is interested in finding our colleague-at-large so that we can take these roll call votes, we can move this along quickly. Great. On the, uh, on the item.
So this puts three items before the council for a roll call vote. Item twenty-four dash one three three two, which is appropriating $100,000 from the Encore Artists and Cultural Stabilization Fund. Item twenty-four dash one three three four, which is creating the Prospect Street Traffic Conditions Stabilization Fund. And item twenty-four dash one three three five, which is appropriating $262,000 from the Prospect Street Traffic Conditions Stabilization Fund. On those items, Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah.
Yes.
Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon. Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Panetta Newfeld.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campin. With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, those items are approved.
Great. Counselor Wilson, would you like to take up ten point eight now?
I would love that, Madam President.
Let's do it.
Is the administration's ready for that?
Item ten point eight is a request of the mayor requesting approval of a pedestrian crossing easement agreement with the MBTA.
Counselor Wilson. Director Singh. Bueller.
Through the, through the President, the administration would like to seek immediate approval of item ten point eight. That was discussed in the Finance Committee meeting.
Any questions on that item? Counselor Davis.
Thank you. And just clarification, which the good chair just confirmed for me, but just for the sake of the public, if anyone else is wondering, this is, this has been submitted because it was, it's the exact same thing that we looked at in committee through the President. Right, this is administrative issue for, in terms of how it was attached or not attached. The document's the same as the one we reviewed, though, correct?
Through the President, that's correct.
Any other questions? Do we need a roll call on that? All right.
On the item, Council McLaughlin.
Yes.
Council Davis.
Yes.
Council Wilson.
Yes.
Council Said.
Yes.
Council Scott. Council Mbah. Council Burnley.
Aye.
Council Klingon. Council Strezzo.
Yes.
Council Panetta Newfeld.
Yes.
Council Ewan Campin. With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that item is approved.
All right, next item, Madam Clerk.
Next item will be item six B, a report of the Committee on Housing and Community Development, meeting on October twenty-first, 2024.
Counselor Strezzo.
Hello. So we met on Monday, October twenty-first, six P M, hybrid, in-person at City Hall and virtually. All members were, were present. And we discussed the permanent location, regular hours of a teen center. And we had a memo presented to us from Parks and Rec. And we had a, the conversation was, was led to the space at Cross and Broadway as well. Questions on, well, does, for instance, do teens have, have that location accessible and available, say, for instance, teen empowerment? There was a back and forth on that. I did keep this item in committee because, as noted in the minutes, the concept of permanent locations for teen center, for a permanent location for the teen center is through various departments, not just Parks and Rec. So hoping for a, a conversation in the next meeting. We discussed the location of Boynton Yards. Director Nod Carney from Economic Development was there to answer questions on that. And, and we also talked about how that community center, which is in the plan, is in phase three, and that is after the residential parcels are built. And that's not happening yet. So that could be quite a while down the line. We talked about support for small businesses during construction and other emergencies. A hearty conversation was had on that about the needs now that ARPA funds are lapsing and the, the support that was, the more immediate support for small businesses that was there is now not. And the city is now having to pivot and to, to more grant funding. And Rachel, Director Rachel Car, Nod Carney from Economic Development was there to say that they are working on ideas and that it's a conversation. But it is a conversation that is, is still happening. Last, we talked about the missing mail on down from, from Postmaster General DeJoy to where we stand today. That item was closed. I, colleagues, I please encourage you to read the minutes on this. And I submit these, these minutes for your approval.
Council Mbah, on the committee report.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you today, at-large counselor, for running such a good, great meeting. So one thing I would like to add to the record, you know, we learned from OSPCD, Economic Development Staff, Rachel, that will be, it will be undertaking for the next few months a strategic planning process to answer the question of what does economic development look like after COVID? So after the funding from ARPA, you know, and other federal grants and state COVID recovery grants are running out and local businesses have fully recovered from the pandemic disruption, it is now appropriate to assess the new situation of economic activity. What would the needs of small and large businesses going forward? And how can we redefine how our city programs and regulations, you know, could be more effective? So on that note, I think it will be important that OSPCD, you know, should be able to cooperate with housing and, you know, community development in this journey so that we can, you know, have input in a timely fashion, you know, to, to make sure that our work is successful. Thank you.
Counselor Strezzo, any response? Or you're good.
If I may, the, there's a, the minute notes have a, so please read the minute notes if you have a chance, everyone. And I, because there, there is a, a good conversation. It's, it's, there's a good transcription of the conversation in the minute notes, and it is an ongoing conversation. And also additionally, colleagues, please, I, I know that, that you are working hard in your wards and at-large, if you may, but to, to support small businesses and get the word out or just what we can do to, to really support our, our smaller businesses. We have over 3,000 of them. And I, I don't know what post-ARPA is going to look like for small business support in our main streets. So, yeah, thanks.
Okay, committee reports approved. Okay, committee report's approved. Next item.
Item 6C is a report of the committee on land use, meeting in joint session with the planning board on October 17th, 2024.
Councilor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. We held a number of public hearings, most notably the amendment to remove parking minimums on developments citywide. I'll just highlight this one because it seemed like all the other amendments, all the other hearings were about parking, whether, whether there was for that or not. So we had a discussion, there were many people for it, cited the potential of removing parking minimums as a way to reduce traffic, to get more cars off the street, and also to increase affordability for apartments there. People spoke against it citing ADA concerns and also the concerns about off-street parking. So that's it. It was a good hearing. If people want to listen to it, you can go online, and I submit this committee report to be accepted.
Okay, that committee report's approved. Next item.
Item 6D is a report of the committee on legislative matters, meeting on October 15th, 2024.
Councilor Davis.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee did meet on this, on this, on that date. There were two primary items up for discussion. The first was a, a, a resolution to revise the way that we approve block parties, submitted by a good counselor from, a good counselor-at-large, and Counselor, two counselors-at-large, actually. The, the long and short of this is, is that the, there's a, a resolution that was suggested by the city clerk, that the, the committee voted to, to take, that will, that the city council no longer review and approve applications for block parties, and that the city clerk shall assume responsibility for final approval and applications for block parties. That'll take, that'll go into effect January 1st, which is important just for administrative and tracking and, you know, future record-keeping and whatnot, as well as to sort of get the, the process in place. The key, the, the key, and I want to thank the city clerk and, and all of the other staff that I'm sure put time into the thinking and revising the process. The proposal is to create a new type of, new type of application, and that it's specific to block parties. Block parties, as opposed to being a full public event permit, these would be a more streamlined process, and, and essentially just require a bit less red tape, but allow some easier, use of easier stuff to block the street, to block the street off. For example, sometimes those getting the horses from DPW has been a challenge, I know, in cases and stuff, so just various things that, that make it a lot easier. The one thing that, that part of this resolution was to provide an award or grant of, of money. The, the administration advised that there really isn't, it's not advisable, there really wasn't a way they could do that. Essentially, they said no. But the, the clerk's office, to their credit, and, and, you know, for, for what sounded like good reason, to, to me at least, as one member of the, of the, the committee, but the clerk's office did say that they were working with the administration to, to see if there's a, a way to sort of put together block party kits, so things that would, that would be helpful to have a block party, various games, just stuff that makes it easier that might be, in lieu of financial support, might, you know, might be provided for folks when you're having a block party. We didn't get into, to a lot of details on that, we'll, we'll leave that to, to the folks looking into it, but there was support for that expressed, and I hope that we can, you know, anything we can do to make the block parties easier and more fun for everybody. The one, the one thing that we did discuss in, in terms of sort of a, a pushback was, I think it was Counselor Scott noted, and it was agreed, I think all the members expressed their, their, their strong agreement that we like hearing about block parties, we like when the good counselor-at-large, the Chair of License and Permits talks about the block parties coming up. We didn't want to lose that, and it's also, I think, maybe helpful for, for folks in the public to, to hear about block parties that they weren't aware of, and for us to, to make sure we're aware of them. So we requested that the clerk's office still provide us with a list as a communication so that we can still shout those up and, and give them their due, because they're one of the great things we do as community here, and we didn't want to lose that benefit, so that, we did, we did include that in a resolution or ordinance or anything else, but that request was made, and the clerk's office agreed that that was a good, good idea. So that's all we have to do on that, that one's done. Then the other item before us, and we'll have to take an action on this, you all would have received a, an amendment to the, the ordinance that addresses our fossil-fuel-free efforts. The original, when this was passed, was, it's a home petition, it relates to a home petition, and there is a, a, a date, the date of January 1st, 2025, or six months, six months after the state gives us permission to do this. Without getting into the details, essentially, we are now at the point where even if we somehow got permission from the state between now and the end of the calendar year, it'd be a little too soon to get all of the, the ducks in a row, so we just basically took that January 1st date out, and if and when we ever get permission from the state, we'll have six months, the administration, was it six months? Was it 90 days? Now I'm forgetting. Yeah, 180 days, yeah, 180 days, to, for that to go into effect so that the, you know, we can take all the necessary steps to put that in place. Hopefully that'll happen soon. I don't think it's going to happen before the end of the calendar year, so it didn't seem like it was a significant, you know, a material change, so we recommended approval of that, and so I, with that, I submit the report to be accepted, or I requested the report be accepted as submitted, and move to enroll and ordain the amendment to the fossil-free ordinance.
Councilor Burnley, on the committee report.
Thank you, through the chair, and thank you to my, both my colleague-at-large for bringing this item forward to streamline the block parties, and also to my colleague from Ward 6 for giving a great rendition of the conversation, including the real, what I'll say is, I expressed some hesitance to, to give the clerk this responsibility, not out of any lack of support for her or her office, but strictly because it is, quite frankly, it's sad to me how much previous city councils have given away their powers and responsibilities to separate bodies, and the little power we have, I feel sad to lose. Having said that, I think it is most important that we create a system that is as seamless and streamlined as possible for our residents to create block parties, to build community trust and tapestry of our great city. And to that end, one of the, one element that my colleague from Ward 6 did not mention is that I have talked both on, on and off the record with our clerk about putting together some kind of brochure or zine to tell the public how this new system for applying for a block party license will exist, what it will look like, how easy it is, and hopefully one that can match the ethos and the excitement and fun of block parties in our community, which to me is one of the best things that Somerville does. I actually just emailed the clerk right now with an example of obscene of our Somerville block party applications that has predated this conversation by a number of years, but I just want to tell the public, this is not the last you will hear about this, we will be hopefully engaging with you to make sure that as changes are made, the public is kept informed, and people can increase the number of block parties we have in Somerville and bring more fun and merriment to us all. And that I will still be yelling out different block party things at, in council meetings. Thank you.
Councilor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the good counselor-at-large and to the Chair Davis for taking this up. So just, to say that all the colleagues go to Alex DeJester, this is, this was, this was his idea, so we don't have any revolutionary ideas here, so that's why I was also like, you know, passing to go back to him, you know, when a constituent sent a request, you know, we don't hijack it and then say, oh, yeah, now we've solved the problem, no, we asked, what is it that, you know, so I kind of like went back and said, yes, what the situation is, and so we'll, we'll keep it as a tri period because we are saying, yeah, we can always do amen, we can do stuff, but, so I literally just, I'm happy again, like when, when we were trying to also like release it, I was like, okay, if we're meeting every two weeks, you know, I want to listen to our city clerk because she's been super helpful, knows her stuff, but at the same time, we don't, I, my whole goal was not to overwhelm the office or try to see again any roadblock because we, we hear from people. So the last, if we hear again something else, that somebody applied, it's been three weeks, four weeks, we don't want to be submitting another order here to, you know, like, take this thing back and say, okay, well, we made a mistake because we were trying to follow, you know, like, the orders and the procedures that we think, you know, was best for the community, so that's, I just want to thank Alex DeJester for the initiative. Thank you to my colleagues for, you know, stepping in and filling the gap and trying to, you know, produce this outcome. Thank you, Madam President.
Okay, the committee report is approved, which brings us to 63 enrollment and ordainment.
Yes, indeed. Item 24-1457 is now before the council for enrollment and ordainment, which is the amendment to section 6-97 of the Code of Ordinances to change the effective date for the fossil-fuel-free ordinance. On enrollment, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Said.
Yes.
Councilor Scott. Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Klingon. Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Panetta Neuvelt.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan. With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that item is enrolled. And on ordainment, Councilor McLaughlin.
Yes.
Councilor Davis.
Yes.
Councilor Wilson.
Yes.
Councilor Said.
Yes.
Councilor Scott. Councilor Mbah.
Yes.
Councilor Burnley.
Aye.
Councilor Klingon. Councilor Strezzo.
Yes.
Councilor Panetta Neuvelt.
Yes.
Councilor Ewan Campan. With eight counselors in favor, none opposed, and three absent, that item is ordained.
Next item.
The next item is item 6E, a report of the committee on licenses and permits, meeting on October 23rd, 2024.
Councilor Burnley.
Thank you, through the chair. We met yesterday for what was essentially a pretty speedy 30-odd-minute meeting. We spoke about two items, one that is before us, the one before us is 808 Windsor Street, new garage license that can fit 242 vehicles. I believe the company has 42 of those vehicles, so about 200 more vehicles for the public. This is near the target, near, outside of Union Square for those following along at home. This new garage will be open 24/7/365, so if you're in that neighborhood and you, you want to just, you know, park somewhere for some money, there you go. And we had one other item, renewal to a garage license that actually goes back until, we've been told, to the 1940s, this garage license, associated with the Dewire Family Trust. The council, previously it had some difficulty getting, getting in touch with the Dewires over several meetings, but we did actually hear from a representative of the trust, and we held that item in committee so that we could just speak with them about the need to ensure that their properties are well-maintained and not neglected, so as to maintain the character of our neighborhoods and be good neighbors for all the butters, based on a request that Counselor Mbah and I received from a constituent. So that one's not on here, but with that, I would ask that these two items be approved tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Wilson.
Do I need to wait until, Madam President?
Did you have a question about the committee report?
No.
Oh, okay, sorry, I thought you had a question about the committee report. Committee report is approved. Counselor Wilson.
Thanks, Madam President. I'll move to waive the readings of items 75 and 76 and ask those be sent to Finance.
Those items will be sent to Finance, thank you. Next item.
The next item is item 8.2, an officer's communication from the Director of Health and Human Services conveying the Board of Health annual report for 2023.
That item is placed on file. Next item. Uh, great question for the Chair of Public Health and Public Safety, who is not in the room. Okay, let's come back to it.
The next item is item 9.1.
Councilor Burnley.
Thank you, thank you, on the highway express to public events licenses. I would like to waive the reading and move for approval, items 9.1 through 9.14, as well as items, oh, actually.
Bless you.
Yeah, well, yeah, I think that's actually, and bless you on the record. And I, the only items I would like to highlight for the public at this moment are that there are a few public events coming to Somerville very soon that people should look out for. October 25th, which is tomorrow, there, from 6:00 PM to 11:30 PM, there is a fall festival happening that you should, if you're following along on your agenda, is item 9.11, so be free to look into the details on that one. There's also a Halloween trick-or-treat, October 31st, from 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, it's going to be great fun for the family, check that out. And close to, Union Square Main Streets will be holding a, their annual holiday stroll on December 7th, so if you're already looking forward to that holiday season, 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM, you can go and, as my colleague-at-large said, support local businesses, make sure that you're checking out as many as possible. There are usually many games that the Union Square Main Streets puts on, and if you go to enough businesses, you can collect some prizes. And finally, just a few blocks from my home in Magoon Square, there is going to be a ribbon cutting on November 7th for Henry Hansen Park, which is our second smallest park in the city. I've been reminded, because there's one park that's not really a park, that is technically smaller, but that will be at between 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM, and I just have to say, it looks beautiful, and it's going to be, it is definitely an improvement from a visual standpoint. So with that, I'd ask for these items to be approved.
Those items are approved. Next item.
Thank you, Madam President. Shall we pick up item 8.2?
Yes.
The Board of Health annual report for 2023.
Yes, Councilor McLaughlin, would you like to send that to committee?
Does anyone else want it sent to committee? No.
That will place, keep it placed on file.
The next item then is item 10.2, an order by Councilors Mbah and Panetta Neuvelt that the Chief of Police provide an explanation regarding why there was no police assistance or crossing guard coverage at the intersection of Curtis Street and Powderhouse Boulevard during school drop-off hours on October 23rd, 2024.
Councilor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you again also for co-sponsoring this, this resolution of all other, because ensuring that the safety of students and families during school drop-off and pickup hour is a critical responsibility of our city. And yesterday morning, there was no crossing guard station at the intersection of Curtis Street and Powderhouse Boulevard, a high-traffic area during school drop-off hours, which created a hazardous situation for students and families, especially as the weather was foggy. The school administration had relocated the crossing guard in front of West Somerville Neighborhood School to Curtis Street, yet no immediate assistance was provided from the Somerville Police Department despite efforts to contact them for support during this high-risk period. The lack of police presence and assistance despite officers being visibly assigned to other details across the city represents a concerning gap in resource allocation and public safety, particularly in protecting, you know, our schoolchildren. So I would need a plan of action be presented to the city council before the next city council, along with a commitment from both departments to prevent similar occurrences in the future. Believe it or not, I actually had to even be the crossing, crossing guard because I saw the assistant principal like crossing the kids, so I was like, no, you can't be doing this. So I took it and, you know, like stepped in to help, you know, in that event, so it should go to traffic and parking, Madam President.
That item is sent to traffic and parking. Next item.
Item 10.3 is an order by Councilors Mbah and Panetta Neuvelt that the Chief of Police, in collaboration with the Director of Mobility, develop and present a plan to ensure that crossing guards are adequately stationed at critical intersections near schools during high-traffic hours, and that in the absence of crossing guards, police officers are deployed to ensure the safety of students and families.
Councilor Mbah.
Traffic and parking, Madam President. I should have just said they should read both items.
This item's sent to traffic and parking. Next item.
Item 10.4 is a communication by Councilor Mbah conveying an update on the activities of the Job Creation and Retention Trust Fund.
Councilor Mbah.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll be brief here, so we've been meeting since January for the Job Creation and Retention Trust, but at the October month meeting, we allocated approximately $300,000, you know, drawn from developer linkage payments to allow the continuation of three programs of workforce development. This program provides jobs training for young people who want to enter specific industries, including construction and building management, healthcare, or STEM, and training for older workers in these fields to gain more skills. So because the real estate market has been slowing down and ARPA funding is ending, we expect that the trust will be receiving only a limited amount of new money in the next year, and with final linkage payment from other buildings that are now completing next year, and with final linkage payment from other buildings that are now completing construction. So, afterwards, there's probably not going to be a lot of projects in the pipeline. And just to make a note that cumulatively, the trust has set up, since it was set up in 2019, it spent a total of over $4 million. In the coming months, the trust will be considering a strategy to maintain some level of workforce training assistance for the possible period of low revenues. And the training will, they will also be presenting an annual report next month, November 19, at 6:30 p.m. at the TAB building. So, it's, it will be quite information that we can all learn what they've been doing throughout the year and, you know, maybe ask any questions that you have. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counselor. Any questions? That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 10.5 is a communication by Counselor Mba conveying an update on the activities of the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Counselor Mba.
Thank you, Madam President. Similarly to the Job Creation and Retention Trust, I also sit on the Affordable Housing Trust, and we've been meeting also, you know, since January. But last month, at the October meeting, the Affordable Housing Trust also has received a preliminary request for a grant of about $3.9 million to help fund the 52 unit, which is like 100% affordable housing residential project on the D2, D3 parcel at Union Square. The trust has available funds to cover this, and we'll receive a full presentation and deliberate on the project request at the next monthly meeting. So, the Affordable Housing Trust meets every month to consider the allocation of monies for housing assistance that come to the city, primarily from linkage payment that new commercial developments pay and from Community Preservation Act revenues. During the last two years, there have been commitments made, you know, maybe like about $19 million, and trust now has another five or six million, five to six million dollars of uncommitted funds available, available for new projects. So, although there has been a slowdown in revenue due to downturn in commercial real estate market, the trust will continue to receive some payment from residential project plus Community Preservation Act housing funds, that total about $1.6 million each year. So, some of the federal housing grants also flow through the trust. I'll be reporting going forward because this is like the first report. So, every month now, I will be giving updates about this job retention and Affordable Housing Trust. And folks can also check, you know, on the website. There are determinants of past meetings that have been occurring. Thank you, Madam President.
All right. That item is placed on file. Next item.
Item 10.7 is a resolution by counselors Wilson and Klingon that this council hereby welcomes Nina Baer, Ewan Campan to Somerville, extends its best wishes to her very proud parents, and looks forward to Nina's bright future in Somerville.
Whole council would like to sign on to that. Counselor Wilson, any additions?
I've got a lot to say on this. No, just very, very happy for our colleague and his family, and just really ecstatic to have another young Somervillean.
Items approved. Next, Madam Clerk, let's waive the readings of 10-9, 10-10, and 10-11, and place those on file. Counselor Wilson.
Yeah, thanks, Madam President. It's late. I'll be really quick. I just can't let this item go without comment. Tufts undergrad student body has increased from 5,196 in 2015 to 6,877 last fall. That's an increase of over 1,600 undergrads, or over 32% over those eight years. During that time, Tufts has built housing for 207 undergrads and has a dorm in the pipeline that will house another 398 undergrads. Love seeing Tufts build new dorms and new housing, but it's not coming close to keeping up with the growth of that student body. And if anyone out there is wondering why we care, it's because Somerville bears the burden of housing many of those Tufts students. Over 1,600 Tufts students live off-campus in Somerville, and these students often live together in coalitions of roommates, and these coalitions typically live in three-plus-bedroom rental units, and we have a shortage of those units in our city. Families can't compete with students because children don't pay rent. So, in defense of families, I'm calling on Tufts to please do more to house their students. Please build more dorms. Thanks.
Counselor Burnley.
Thank you. Really briefly, on that exact point, my colleague referenced a new dorm that's coming online, and we are very grateful to see the university stepping up to build more housing. How they build housing is very important, and the carpenters locally were just on protesting near that site because the university has chosen not to go with a unionized project labor agreement-based approach to this new dorm. So, I do also want to remind them that despite that being on the Medford side, we do hold a vested interest in public institutions in our city taking the most ethical approach to construction. Just a reminder.
Okay. Those items are placed on file.
And that brings us to the end of the agenda for the evening, Madam President.
Any late items, Madam Clerk?
There is one late item before the council. I recommend that the council not accept it because it is out of order, but it's the council's decision, so I will read it for you. It's an order by Counselor Mba that the Commissioner of Public Works and the Director of Water and Sewer implement a minimum 24-hours notice policy prior to any planned water service interruption.
So, what is the process at this point, Madam Clerk?
You can take a vote to accept that late item, or you can just accept it and vote on it. It's up to you.
Okay. Any comments from the council on how to approach this? Would anyone like to take a vote to accept it, or just, Counselor McLaughlin?
I would suggest we accept this late item and let everyone know, please don't submit late items.
Okay. Counselor Mba.
Thank you, Madam President. To the good counselor from Ward 1, I don't know if, I'm sure most at-large folks got this email. This is, this email came today. It's a constituent that is talking about their water being shut down. I don't think this is something we should, you know, take it lightly and not submit something to show that this is not a, something that we will see and not take action. So, I will not, this is my first late item I'm submitting because I saw an email and I looked at the agenda. Nobody submitted anything to that effect. This is, I don't, I think it's, yeah, so, it was, it's not fun for me. I'm not submitting to myself to come and clear my backyard or something. Thank you, Madam President.
Counselor Wilson and Counselor McLaughlin.
Yeah, Madam President. If the desire is to send this to committee, I'm happy to have this point made in committee. In this particular case, it illustrates we have a lot of broken gates in this city. They're used to turn off water. I believe in this case, it's my understanding that when they went to go turn off the gates for the original addresses impacted by this, they were unable to, because the broken gate, were unable to turn off the water, therefore, they had to do it farther upstream, basically increasing the size of the, of the outage. So, just some, you know, if it's going to committee, I just, we should talk about that, the reality of the broken gates. It makes giving 24-hour notice really difficult when they get out there, and the scene on the ground is very different from what they're expecting. Just naming that.
Counselor McLaughlin.
Thank you, Madam President. I'll try to be quick because I was trying to be quick to begin with. The reason I said what I said is because we had the choice between not allowing the subject to be discussed at all or allowing it to be discussed. So, I allowed it to be discussed because the item was submitted. I think the clerk was trying to make a point about whether a late item like this would be appropriate to take up at all. So, that's all I'm saying is like when we submit late items, not for myself, because I don't have to do all the work for the clerk's office, and for the sake of open meeting law, it's good to make sure that an item truly is something that is very time-sensitive and needs to be discussed at that point.
Counselor, Counselor Mba, would you like to be sent to committee?
Absolutely, but I want to thank the good counselor from Ward 1 for the clarification. I missed, you know, characterize this, the good counselor's statement. Yeah, I will want this to go to committee.
Which committee, Counselor?
Maybe Public Works or Public Utilities.
Public Utilities and Public Works. Okay. So, this item is sent to Public Utilities and Public Works.
Thank you, Madam President.
Other late items?
There are no further items before the council.
Okay. Then I move to adjourn. Let's take a roll call.
No need.
No need. We are adjourned.